I will remind you also that we are on YouTube and Facebook tonight as we have been since the pandemic, and we also welcome our folks at home. So with that, we'll call to order the February meeting of the Randolph County Board of Commissioners, and we welcome each one of you here tonight. We have a rather large crowd compared to most of the agenda that we have for tonight. We do have some special recognitions to take care of, but we're glad that you're here for whatever your interest is, if it's just to watch county government in action. And we always thank you for that, being a part of it. I don't usually go to this extent, but we do have, we met earlier this afternoon with the City of Archdale on a significant economic development project, and some of those folks have stayed over. Mayor Louis Dorset is here, Councilman Roger Blackwell, and we're going to be recognizing Roger's son here in a little while for his retirement from the Sheriff's Department. City Manager Zeb Holden is back there. I see former Mayor Bert Lance Stone back there in the crowd. Bert, thank you. Beverly Nelson's here, and a good group from our Archdale Trinity Chamber. Mayor Hurley from Franklinville is here, I saw him earlier. And we have, I don't usually do this, but Major Cheek is from the Sheriff's Department, is back with us tonight. Major Cheek has been in a major battle, probably more so than anything he's experienced in the Sheriff's Department, and we're glad to have you tonight, Phil. You're a big part of the county and a big part of our school system here, and we're thankful for the answer of prayers, and you're here to evidence that tonight. We thank you for it. And of course, we have a couple other special recognitions that we're going to do more formally a little bit later in our agenda. We also have some gentlemen over here on the front row that I have no idea why they're here. This is not a part of my agenda. Jim Melvin from the Bryan Foundation, Carl Warren, who's President and CEO of the North Carolina Railroad, is here tonight, and Mr. Jim Nance, who is a member of the Railroad Board, but some of you might remember Jim as Chevrolet dealership here in Ashboro several years ago, and these men have all been a very important and significant part of the process that brought Toyota to Randolph County at our megasite. So wherever you're here, we thank you, and we welcome you. So with that, tonight, we're going to have our invocation. I do want to mention, as we prepare for that, I suppose most of you know that former North Carolina Senator Jerry Tillman passed away Saturday evening and was with the family this afternoon at the funeral home making arrangements. The visitation for Mr. Tillman will be on Friday night, February the 24th, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. at the Cumbie Funeral Home in Archdale. His funeral service will be at 11 o'clock on Saturday, February the 25th, at 11 o'clock at Archdale Friends Church Meeting, Archdale Friends Meeting, they call it. So we want to remember that, and remember the Tillman family. Chaplain is coming to have our invocation this evening, and we certainly want to remember Bill, the Tillman family, I spent the afternoon with them, and fine young people, and known them since their birth, and we remember Jerry and the important role he's played in the history of this county. He was a very significant reason that we were able to save our hospital, and to work that through the General Assembly, the legislation that provided the rural hospital stabilization fund, that helped us keep our hospital open and provide health care for the citizens of this county. So we want to remember the Tillman family and ask you to do that, please, in the days and weeks ahead. So with that, Chaplain Hatfield, if you would come for our invocation. After that, we'll have our pledge of allegiance, so please stand.
Lord, you know why each one of us is here this evening, the things we'd like to accomplish, the things we'd like to say, and Lord, I just pray tonight, Lord, that you would just orchestrate this time together. Father, I do want to pray for the Tillman family right now, the pain they must be suffering, but Lord, what he accomplished, the memories, the organizations he touched, and Lord, I just pray comfort for them right now, and you just direct the steps of all involved there, Father. Thank you for that precious man and for what he accomplished for us here in Randolph County and for so many places. Lord, we lift tonight up to you, God, the special recognition to each one of them, that they would feel welcome and know that they accomplished great things for this county, and, Father, I pray for each one of them. You know where they are and where their future lies from this point on, and I just ask you to watch over each one of them. And again, thank you for this county. Thank you for the freedom that we have here tonight to come before you, the King of Kings or Lord of Lords, to praise you, to talk to you, that we have a God who listens to our requests. Father, we surrender this night to you. You know the needs of every person here. My desire is always is that you just continue to draw each one to you. Father, we love you, we praise you, we worship you, in Jesus' precious name. Amen?
Amen. Thank you, Phil. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic from which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. I recognize some folks. I'm going to ask County Manager Howell to, we have a couple more that we want to recognize right now.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I wanted to very briefly recognize a couple of new staff people we have with us tonight. Jenny Parks, many of you know Jenny from her over 20-some years experience with soil and water conservation. Jenny's our new, will be one of my new administrative assistants and a deputy clerk to the Board of Commissioners. She's learning down on the end, and we're happy to have her with us tonight. Also, William Johnson. I told William, I said, it's kind of like a church meeting, people sit on the same chairs every month, so I told him where he needed to sit. William is a new Assistant County Manager for Operations. He is a former City Manager of Randleman, and prior to that, he was an Assistant County Manager in Edgcombe County. So we're happy to have both of them with us moving forward in what will be some challenging times ahead.
All right. So with that, we have our consent agenda. I'm just going to ask the board for one motion right now, and that has to do with the last item on the consent agenda, which is adopt a proclamation honoring Pat Hurley and Alan McNeil, and I just ask a motion to approve that proclamation so that we can make that presentation.
I'll make the motion that we adopt proclamations honoring both Pat Hurley and Alan McNeil.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, no. And I'm going to ask Alan and Pat if they'll come forward at this time. Y'all come out here. Let's go out. Phil. Alan. Powell. 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 Some of you, I know a lot of you were actually here last month at our January meeting when we recognized former Representative Alan McNeil and presented the Order of the Longleaf Pine to Alan, and a lot of the things were said about him, and most of, all of those need to be said again tonight, but I just want to just say that Alan has just been a tremendous asset to us. I think I shared with you that first time I met Alan was about 1:00 in the morning down off of Fuller Mill Road, when he was a deputy working the night shift, 7:00 at night to 7:00 in the morning, and I was riding with Lichard Hurley, who eventually became our sheriff, and we met up down there, and I was introduced to Alan McNeil. He's never left my life and my work and my efforts from that day till this, and so glad to count him as my friend through life, and for all of you could say the same thing, because he did a great job in representing us as he worked for the Sheriff's Department for some 33 years and 10 years in the North Carolina General Assembly. And he's been a part of our recent history, those, the hospital, the megasite, all those things that we've had to work through. So this is, whereas Alan McNeil has made numerous important contributions to the citizens of North Carolina, and in particular Randolph County, through his role as a community and county leader, and whereas Mr. McNeil served as a member of the North Carolina House of Representatives from 2013 until 2023, and whereas Mr. McNeil filled the unexpired term of Harold Brubaker, big shoes to fill, on August the 13th, 2012, and whereas Mr. McNeil has been an advocate for Randolph and more counties on many critical issues, and whereas during his tenure, Mr. McNeil has demonstrated his dedication to providing a better quality of life for all citizens by devoting countless hours, serving on various boards, committees, as well as state, regional, and local organizations, and whereas Mr. McNeil's kindness, his positivity, his genuine concern for others makes him a friend to everyone. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Randolph County Board of Commissioners that we too acknowledge the talents, the knowledge, the leadership, and dedication of Alan McNeil and the altruistic manner in which he has devoted himself to the service of his fellow citizens continually for the last 10 years. We take this opportunity to formally express our appreciation and give accolades to a man who is a true servant in every sense of the word. Thank you, Alan. Thank you. Now, I could tell you stories about this lady here, too. I've known Pat when she wasn't Pat Hurley. Goes way back, early, I guess into the early '70s, probably, and she was good friends with my cousin and his wife, and we went out and broke bread together and just played some ruck, or my cousin had a set of drums, and I'd try to beat and bang on those, everybody said, "Shut up, that's enough." And Pat has always, always been involved in our community. Of course, then she came to work for, in the Clerk of Court's office and served for a number of years there, and then for 16 years, she's been in North Carolina General Assembly. And she has done many wonderful things for this county and for this region in North Carolina. And she has served in a role of leadership at the General Assembly that's not matched by too many women, speaking frankly here, folks, but she has proven herself and earned that position through her efforts and her willingness to work across the aisle and work for better things for this county and for the citizens of North Carolina. And she has some special interests. She's been a great supporter of our school systems, our municipalities in particular, working on our infrastructure here. She's been a true servant of this community, this county, and across our state. Whereas Pat Hurley has made numerous important contributions to the citizens of North Carolina and in particular Randolph County through her role as a community and county leader, and whereas Ms. Hurley served as a member of the North Carolina House of Representatives for nine terms, from 2017 to 2023, whereas Ms. Hurley has been an advocate for Randolph County on many critical issues, and whereas during her tenure, Ms. Hurley has demonstrated her dedication to providing a better quality of life for all citizens by devoting countless hours, serving on various boards and committees, as well as state, regional, and local organizations. Whereas Ms. Hurley's kindness, positivity, and genuine concern for others shows in everything that she does. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Randolph County Board of Commissioners that we too acknowledge the talents, knowledge, leadership, and dedication of Pat Hurley and the altruistic manner in which she has devoted herself to the service of her fellow citizens for a total of 16 years. We take this opportunity to formally express our appreciation and give accolades to a woman who is a true servant in every sense of the word. God bless you. Thank you. We're just going to, we have a couple more rest, recognitions tonight. I mentioned earlier Lieutenant Michael Blackwell with the Randolph County Sheriff's Department is retiring, and I think Andrea Hazelton is here tonight to make this presentation.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, thank you so much. It is my sincere honor to recognize the retirement of my friend and law enforcement brother Mike Blackwell. Detective Lieutenant Mike Blackwell began his law enforcement career by attending basic law enforcement training at the Randolph Community College, graduating in March of 1992. Upon graduating, Mike Blackwell was sworn in as a reserve deputy with the Sheriff's Office. He was hired full-time in October of 1992 and was assigned to the Civil Division as a bailiff, where he worked for three years. He then transferred to the Road Division, where he served civil process papers throughout the county. After spending multiple years in the Civil Division, Mike was then transferred to the Breaking and Entering Task Force. This division focused on saturation patrols to detect and deter criminal activity as it involved property crimes in Randolph County. Might want to add that he was one of the first ones on that team and didn't have anything to go by, so he was one of the original members. When necessary, this division assisted the Criminal Investigations Division, Vice Narcotics Division, and the Warrant Squad. While serving in the Breaking and Entering Task Force, Mike was promoted to corporal and then to sergeant. In 2010, Mike was promoted to the Criminal Investigative Division as a detective sergeant. In this role, Mike investigated property crimes, frauds, and serious assaults, to include homicides. In 2016, Mike was promoted to Detective Lieutenant, where he assisted in an administrative role in the Criminal Investigative Division. Through Mike's 30 years of service to the Sheriff's Office, he also served in multiple volunteer roles within the agency. He was a member of the Sheriff's Emergency Response Team, also known as the SWAT Team, and he did that for 18 years as a volunteer. He was one of the four original deputies on the motor unit, which led parades, funerals, and numerous other events in which the motorcycle squad was needed. Mike utilized this role to also volunteer for numerous DARE events and graduations, and assisted the School Resource Officers Division. In 2005, Mike earned his Advanced Law Enforcement Certificate through the North Carolina Sheriff's Association Training and Standards. We appreciate and congratulate Mike Blackwell on his successful 30 years of service to the citizens of Randolph County and his service to the Randolph County Sheriff's Office. Mike?
I don't see Gigi among the audience, but if she isn't here, I still want her to be recognized. She could be watching online. Good evening, everyone. I am here to recognize Virginia Gigi Rogers, who retired from Department of Social Services with a total of 23 years in service. She is a 1980 graduate of Ashboro High School, and she started her career with social services in September 1999. While an employee at DSS, she has been a fabulous asset to us. She continues to have a very positive attitude. She treats our citizens with dignity and respect, compassion, and understanding, and maintains a very high level of excellent standards when completing her work. She adheres to all of the policy guidelines and applies them to her cases. She has three children. She says the best thing about working at Randolph County Department of Social Services is being able to make a difference in the lives of citizens, and she's excited to be able to make it to retirement. The advice that she leaves behind for all of us is to take it just one day at a time. In retirement, she looks forward to spending more time with family, working on her house and yard, and hopes to spend as much time at the beach and in the mountains. I would like to join her in that. We want to congratulate Gigi. She certainly will be greatly missed, and her service to the citizens is very much appreciated, and I'll accept on her behalf.
The manager has a different agenda than what I have, so there's one more recognition I'm going to ask Howell to present.
We have a special recognition tonight, and I'd like to call forward Jim Melvin with the Bryan Foundation and Carl Warren, North Carolina Railroad, and others that may be here with you, and if you'd come to the front for the special recognition.
Thank you. These guys delegated a little responsibility to me, so I'm going to, I'm going to cover it and incorporate them by reference into my remarks. Delighted to be here this evening. My name is Carl Warren. I'm the President and CEO of the North Carolina Railroad. I'm here tonight to sort of turn the tables a little bit and recognize our previous presenter and the Chairman, Darrell Frye, for his partnership with us on the megasite. Also joining me this evening is Jim Nance from our Board of Directors and Jim Melvin, who many of you know from, from our prior work together. Now, we tried to surprise Darrell back in November with a, at our board meeting, and somehow he outwitted us. I don't know if he just sort of figured out what we were up to or what it was, but we managed to get Jim Melvin down there, and we presented him with this beautiful locomotive belt to commemorate his assistance, stewardship, service to the, to the megasite project. So what I'm doing tonight is I'm basically catching up on that presentation, because we were determined to not let Darrell's partnership slide into stealth mode. So I'm, I'm here tonight on behalf of the North Carolina Railroad Board and management team simply to say thank you. Thank you for your decade of partnership, your vision, and your collaboration. We would not be where we are today without your assistance. The megasite project was obviously important to us. It's transformative for the state and region. It builds on, on work that Phil Kemp, who obviously many of you know from the, the commission, did at the very beginning, and the beautiful thing about it is nobody quit. 1,900 acres got assembled. We didn't worry about Toyota in 2017. This team kept pressing, and it brought it home in 2022, and Darrell was obviously a central part of that. I'm a relative newcomer to the scene. I got to North Carolina to begin work with the North Carolina Railroad two years ago, but I was just always so impressed from day one with Darrell's unwavering support, his creativity, and persistence. I'm proud to have had the opportunity to work on this project and to work with the county, and I'm even more gratified to say thank you on behalf of the railroad. I know that I am reflecting accurately the appreciation of the entire North Carolina Railroad team, our current staff, my predecessor Scott Saylor, and key former staff by being here today. I'm so proud of what we've all achieved, and thank you for giving me a few minutes just to say those simple words. Thank you, Darrell.
Thank you. Certainly unexpected, and thank you, gentlemen, for being here tonight, and not tonight, but for all, all your service to this project over, really longer than most people are aware, but I've had a couple of speaking engagements and went back through some of my notes, and I've got some minutes that go back to 2010, where we were, what, what we were doing, and what we're celebrating today as Carolina Core. I've got those maps from about 12 years ago, where we put together what we, what our vision was for Carolina Core. But thank all of you for, for your dedication and your, your support and dedication to the process, not, not wavering, not quitting, but, but holding the line. Carl, he did mention Scott Saylor, but the railroad was there from day one, and we're most grateful, and of course, Mr. Melvin and his organization that helped bring continuity to the process as well. So thank you, thank you for being here tonight. So with that, we will first take the rest of our consent agenda, items A through P. Does anyone have one of those that you want to pull out? If not, I entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you. I have a second. Motion and second. Those in favor of the consent agenda will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And it is approved. Next is our public comment period. So, I have a clerk. Wait, I'm sorry. Al Morgan will read the rules for our public comment period.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The rules of procedure for the public comment period are as follows. The public comment period will be limited to 15 minutes at the beginning of the meeting. If more time is required, it will be at the discretion of the board. Each speaker must give his or her name, both orally and in writing, before speaking. Speakers will be limited to three minutes. Comments are to be directed to the board as a whole and not to one individual commissioner. Response, discussion, or action concerning issues raised during the public input session will be at the discretion of the board. Speakers will be courteous in their language and presentation, and speakers should not discuss matters which concern the candidacy of any person seeking public office or matters in current or anticipated litigation.
Alan Pugh.
Worked by Sloane. Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, when I last spoke to you on the question of the Sunday opening of libraries, I ran out of time, and so tonight I wanted to just take a brief moment to tell you what I would like for you to consider doing. I would
Oppose no, and it is approved. Next is our public comment period. So, I'm sorry. Morgan will read the rules for our public comment period.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The rules of procedure for the public comment period are as follows. The public comment period will be limited to 15 minutes at the beginning of the meeting. If more time is required, it will be at the discretion of the board. Each speaker must give his or her name both orally and in writing before speaking. Speakers will be limited to three minutes. Comments are to be directed to the board as a whole and not to one individual commissioner. Response, discussion, or action concerning issues raised during the public input session will be at the discretion of the board. Speakers will be courteous in their language and presentation, and speakers should not discuss matters which concern the candidacy of any person seeking public office or matters in current or anticipated litigation.
Alan Pew.
Worked by Sloane. Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, when I last spoke to you on the question of the Sunday opening of libraries, I ran out of time. And so tonight, I wanted to just take a brief moment to tell you what I would like for you to consider doing. I would like for this board to join. I noticed Mayor Melvin was here. In Greensboro, they open four of their branches on Sunday afternoons. They do the same thing in Chatham County. They do the same thing in Montgomery County. This is a simple, inexpensive, easy experiment for this board to try for six months and see if it works. I think it will. I think it will benefit hundreds and hundreds of people in this county with little or no expense to the county. And in that, I would ask that you direct the county manager, to direct the county librarian, to change the hours of operation of our public libraries to open at 10 o'clock in the morning instead of 9 o'clock. Now Franklinville and Seagrove already open at 10 o'clock. Very few people use our libraries between 9 and 10 o'clock in the morning. And take those five hours that are saved, and open our libraries from 1 till 6 on Sunday afternoon. And have the county librarian post the new hours at the door, publish it in the library newsletter that goes to all the friends of the library, put it in the newspaper, put it on Spectrum News, where there are a lot of announcements for the library, and do that, and try it for six months. Now, I may be wrong, but I don't think I am. But try it out, have him report back to you in October how it went. Have him keep count, as Franklinville does, of the people that use the library during their hours. And I think you'll be well pleased with the result, and you can benefit a lot of people, particularly a lot of young people. Now, I'm not asking, ladies and gentlemen, for me. I can go to the library anytime. But there are a lot of people in this county that cannot do that, and there are a lot of students that cannot do that. And I would ask them that you conduct this experiment and see if it doesn't work to the great benefit of literally hundreds of people. And I thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Alan.
Sharon Costelli.
Good evening, and thank you. And also wanted to not only thank the commissioners or county manager, but our representatives, McNeil and Pat Hurley, for their support. A few months ago, I had mentioned to you that your charter academy was up for a 10-year renewal, and today it was voted on by DPI as well as CSAB that we indeed received a 10-year renewal to our charter. So again, thank you for your support, and we're excited to still be part of the community. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I got your invitation to the partnership.
To the partnership, yes.
Thank you for your leadership there.
Hi, Chairman Frye, and commissioners and others. I'm Jane Braswell. I live in the southwest part of Randolph County down High Pine Church Road. Thank you for this time to speak. I've got no delusions anymore that I'm going to change any hearts and minds with my three minutes, but nonetheless, I feel as if there is a point which should be reiterated concerning the decision to not move the Confederate statue from its prominent position of honor in front of the halls of justice. The point brings to mind an area of Randolph County that I'm not going to mention, because I don't really think it's any different from other places in Randolph County at that time. In 1964, Randolph County attempted to integrate the library, and in the next year, 1965, I started first grade. That was the year that they desegregated the Randolph County schools by closing the black schools. It was part of our history, but it was not among our finest days. On that first day of integration, someone had painted graffiti. I didn't understand. The letters KKK lingered, though, for a long time there. There was a crowd of angry yelling adults there. But what I, as a barely six-year-old, found very curious was a black homemade dummy that had been lynched from the school flagpole. Now, the reason a kid saw that was because my dad was the principal, my mom was a teacher there, and so we got there, I assume, a little earlier than most. So the school was high school then, grade first through 12. I don't remember if my dad, you know, if he took it down, how he took it down, if he marched through a crowd, or what it was, but I know he took it down, because instead of throwing it in the dumpster, which he probably should have, he threw it in the big chair in his office where it sat slump there with its, it had a jar head, it had red lips and white eyes, and this big grin on its face, and a stuffy lumped body. After a few weeks or days, I don't know, I do remember that my mom was so aghast when I asked her if we could just play with it, because I had no understanding at the time what it stood for. My dad, 33 was then, would have been 92 this month. He died a couple years ago, but he wasn't really forthcoming about anything. But I did ask him about some of that, and he told me one story, which kind of changed my thinking about telling this story. He said that after some time, the crowd either dispersed or was dispersed, but there was a group of men who lingered outside the entrance of the school. He went outside to ask them to please go home, to let the children settle this among themselves. They said, oh, no, we are here to protect you. And so, as a side, they were not entirely successful. My dad was physically attacked by a neighbor who, because he would not segregate the buses. My dad went to college on a boxing scholarship, and yet he did not respond. I'm talking about some courage here. So I want you to envision that small group of men who gathered their courage, stood on the school lawn, ready to do battle against a majority of their neighbors, accepting that even in a democracy, morality was not and is not decided by the majority. Without any hope or expectation, I await to see that kind of a courage among us today. Thanks.
Thank you, Jane.
Clyde Fowles.
Hello, neighbors. So we see each other again. What I want to talk to you about today is I want to talk to you about the vote that you took back in March. You voted unanimously to leave the monument as it was, where it was. That vote, in my opinion, and the opinion of many, if not most, of Randolph County was an error. It was no different than the vote that the young lady was talking about back then. You know, in 1954, the United States said in Brown versus Board of Education that schools should not be segregated. 10 years later, Randolph County is still having to argue or having to deal with trying to transition to a point where the schools would be desegregated. Your vote back in March, you cannot expect us to wait 10 years for this county to do the right thing. The facts are simple, and they haven't changed since day one. It is a fact that the Confederates went to war to preserve and expand slavery. No one on this board denies that. That is a fact. It is a fact that Confederates, not Union soldiers, but Confederates, killed Randolph County citizens, tortured Randolph County citizens. It is a fact that just the last two months, Robinson County voted by their county commissioners to move their monument. There is nothing that stops us from doing the right thing. The only thing that should stop us is if we think it's not the right thing, if we think it should stay there. And if you feel that it should stay there, you should explain why you feel that way. Why should a monument that honors people that killed Americans in order to preserve and expand slavery stand in front of this building? Why? Thank you.
Jane Gant.
Jane Gant.
Good evening, commissioners, and I come to talk to you again. Today, I would like to address the inhumane way part of this community is treated by our current county commissioners. At present, you have erected a fence to protect a monument at the expense of tax-paying citizens whose ancestors were murdered, sexually assaulted, and sold like animals to the highest bidder, children that were taken from their mothers at young ages and gifted to white men for their pleasure. These same citizens are forced today to pay taxes to support your inhumane positions. I have met with members of this committee face to face to try to understand their position, along with giving them numerous documents to show the unfairness of their actions, and yet they stand with their standard comments. Most people don't want it removed. I ask myself, why would anyone want to honor a part of history that has been distorted and improvised by a group of citizens that refuse to read or attempt to consider what they are honoring? I have come to believe that this is the true faces of those we look upon each month as our elected commissioners. Do you realize that the truth will always prevail? There will come a reckoning with these decisions you make today and how your children and grandchildren will look at your contributions to the community that you claim you support. Not even you can hide your racist actions that will go down in history of your contributions to a portion of this tax-paying community that you refuse to acknowledge or support. Now, I'll address another issue that are brought to your attention. In September, I had a meeting, I had a one-on-one meeting with one of your members to address and to give him documents that I submitted in 2001 in an attempt to get a state on road paved, a great meeting, I thought, and was promised by him that this will be taken care of. After numerous calls and voicemails to the individual, no response. My only conclusion is that, once it was looked at, they realized it was mainly a road that consisted of mostly a minority homes. With over 70 acres of land that is waiting to be developed, I cannot guarantee these relatives that I can convince our commissioners to pave the roadway. I stand before you now with a promise. I will knock on doors, I will hold rallies, and I will continue to see each of you unseated. You took an oath on the Bible to represent this county. Nowhere in that oath did it state that support is for your white citizens only. I leave you with this comment. No way am I tired. I will call each of you out for your outrageous behavior and pray to God that he too is looking down upon your actions. Until that monument is moved to an appropriate place and you hear the cry of the citizens, we will prevail. A fence cannot protect you from your inherited beliefs or actions. I thank you.
Ms. Gant, I will say that that is still a working process.
I would hope so. I would love a response.
I'm Tim Saunders. Most of you know me, but I live on 1402 East Allred Street. I come for you tonight about an issue that is very serious. In a former life, I worked for electric utility. Today, in Philadelphia, two people were arrested for planning an attack on substations. Now, we've already had two attacks on substations locally. These perpetrators are homegrown neo-Nazis. Now, we've got a neo-Nazi problem in this country, but because they're so-called right-wing, we seem to ignore them. They're an existential threat to this country and our well-being, and I just wanted to bring that to your attention. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Tammy Coley.
Hello. My name is Tammy Coley, and I was born and raised here in Ashboro. Some of you might remember me from a speech I did, or not really a speech, but from some thoughts that I shared with you some time back. I just want to remind you of some of those things, and as I have spent more time in Ashboro, I want to share some additional thoughts. First of all, yes, I went to Ashboro High School. Go Hills. From there, I went to UNC, and yes, it was a terrible loss the other day to Duke, but whatever, we'll get over it. So I lived in Raleigh for a while. I lived in Atlanta for a while. I lived in Charlotte for a while, and now, just, I wanted to be so proud to be back home in Ashboro. I totally love being here with my family and my friends. It's amazing. What's not amazing is celebrating. Living in a county where we celebrate the Confederacy, I do not believe, I don't want to believe, that we want to celebrate the very people that wanted to oppress black people, oppress me, the people who wanted to keep me down, the people who didn't want me to be successful. I don't understand why we would want to honor that. I understand the history and wanting to keep the history, yeah. Why does it need to be in front of our monument? Why do we need to honor the Confederacy in front of our, I mean, just right here in downtown Ashboro in front of our courthouse? Why there? Why can't we put it somewhere where it can be historical? And people who want to remember it that way, okay, I can't, I'm not trying to change individual minds here. I'm talking about the county where I grew up, the county where I want to be proud of this county, not thinking of a county that we want to honor the cruelty of slavery. It just doesn't add up. I have not heard anyone express the rationale, the sensible rationale, for why the monument needs to stay. I've heard things like, it's our southern heritage. Think about that for a minute. Is that the way we want to celebrate our southern heritage by remembering slavery? Think about how I feel, and think about how other black people feel, and not just black people. Think about others, not just black people, how it makes us feel to be confronted with that symbol of slavery over and over and over again. People say, you know what, that happened a long time ago. Get over it. First of all, the effects of it still linger today. And second of all, it'd be a lot easier to get over it if we weren't reminded of it every time we walk past that monument.
Ms. Coley, that's your three minutes.
Thank you.
Franklin Suggs.
Mr. Suggs.
I'm Franklin Suggs. Did y'all miss me? For the past several months, I have offered a number of factual reasons to relocate the Confederate monument outside, as have many others. In October, it was purported that relocation is an us-versus-them issue perpetrated by emotional, entitled leftist agitators, and that if this board concedes and relocates the statue, that concession request will become an ending. And at one point, we were even equated to communists. It was further contended that should the memorial be relocated, statue supporters should be offered some measure of good faith and reciprocation, because somehow something has been taken from them. This is the same rhetoric employed by secessionists leading up to, during, and in the aftermath of the Civil War. It serves no purpose but to foment the very atmosphere of us versus them. Relocation advocates are not entitled agitators, nor are we all from the left, as if that is a pejorative. We are certainly not communists. We are a cross-section of Randolph County, and politics has little, if anything, to do with the issue. Emotion is not the impetus, but rather fairness is the only expectation here, and fairness should be at the crux of every topic engaged by this board. Other matters will come before this board that will require compromise, and sometimes even concessions will be necessary. Will emotion enter the fray? Probably. But reason, logic, and ultimately fairness should always prevail. This is not a zero-sum issue. No one loses. To relocate this monument does not eliminate it, but only moves it to a place where people who choose to admire and revere it can do so, and folks who don't wish to see it are not forced to be subjected to it. Relocating this memorial is the reasonable, logical... Relocating this memorial is the reasonable, logical, right, and fair thing to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Franklin. Thank all of our presenters tonight. We will proceed. Our first new business item is our Health Department renovation report. Paxton?
Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. Last summer, you awarded a contract to Smith Senate Architecture to design a renovation to the Health Department, which is located at the R McDowell Center. Since that time, Smith Senate has worked to finalize the design and put together the bid documents, and tonight, we have Robert Carmack and Leanne Bird here, architects with Smith Senate, and they're going to present the final design and request authorization to put the project out to bid. With that, I'll turn it over to Robert.
Thank you for the Commissioners, for the opportunity to come and talk to you about this project. We think it's an exciting project in the county and one that's sorely needed to improve the services they're giving to the Randolph County citizens. So, just want to give you kind of a brief overview and then ask for your approval to move forward with bidding. As you can see, the building was built in the early 80s, the best we can determine, so it's about 40 years old. During that time, it's only had some minor renovations. No major renovations, improvements, or reorganization of the space has happened since then, so it's sorely needed to improve the workflow. Building is approximately 16,000 square feet currently right now. The current spaces have about 35 offices, pharmacy, laboratories, supply spaces, but the two key points I'll point out is, currently, you have two dental exam rooms and 10 just general exam rooms. Those are where a lot of attention was focused, and you'll see at the end kind of where those numbers went from there.
This is the existing floor plan of the Health Department, so there's currently a centralized lobby that will go over to the general exams, as well as the Women and Infants Clinic, the WIC, on the lower right-hand portion of the plan. There's a dental clinic directly in the center at the back of the building, and that's where those two offices or those exam rooms are located. You can see here, the areas highlighted are the base bid renovation zones. This will reorganize the central lobby space to create better check-in and checkout flow for the Health Department, as well as create the separate dental renovation area where the WIC used to be located in the front lower portion. The back dental suite will be renovated into additional offices, and current exam rooms that are not able to be currently used will be renovated so that they can be used. This portion highlighted is the new dental clinic. So, as you can see here, there will now be five dental exam rooms, where there are currently only two in the building. They will have a dedicated waiting area, and there are a couple shared spaces with the vestibule and the break room with the General Health Department. So, this area highlighted in green is our first alternate, so that would be renovating the remaining exam rooms and upgrading those so that they can be used by the public more efficiently. The corridors surrounding those, highlighted in yellow, would also be renovated in alternate two, to create a secure area for that portion of the building. In alternate three, the blue highlighted portion, the offices on the north side would be renovated and updated. You can see in the purple highlighted portion, that that's alternate four, and those offices would then be renovated and updated. An alternate five, in that blue portion on the right-hand side, that existing office suite would be renovated and updated. And then in alternate six, the green portion highlighted, that is the remainder of the building, that would be renovated and updated. And then the last alternate seven would be upgrading the lab, so redoing those casework items to make that space more efficient and usable for the technicians. So, in the new renovation, there would be three additional offices created for a total of 38. It would go from five dental exam rooms to five exam rooms from the two previously. There would be six additional exam rooms on the General Health Department side for a total of 16 now. Centralized storage, the dedicated check-in and checkout area for improved flow, an additional break room, and of course, the secured circulation corridors for that Health Department side from the dental suite and the offices.
So, one of the reasons we laid this project out like it is, is, one, to help with budget, we know that there's going to be multiple funding sources for this project, so we staggered this into seven alternates to allow budget flexibility and allow this project to come in budget, whether we get all seven or we get apart, one, two, the base, but it gives a lot of flexibility. The base coming in about $1.7 million total with the whole packages of what we designed to renovate this whole building is sitting right at about $2.5 million. Once you add the contingency, technology, owner's reserve, and other fees associated, the total project budget comes to about $2.9 million. Assuming we get approval for release for bids, we're looking at releasing here in a couple weeks, once we finish dotting some i's and crossing some t's, so release in February, we'll be bidding in March, come back to you hopefully in April, meeting for the award, start construction, and then within 10 to 12 months, be in the building and have it fully complete by April of '24.
So, wouldn't it be if some economies, if it was bid as one? I mean, are they all going to be bid as if they were done just that?
They will be. With the alternates, we'll have some savings in superintendent time and things like that, they'll be consolidated into it. So, bidding and out in multiple alternates doesn't increase the price, and actually, the more alternates you get, the cheaper they're going to get, the price gets per square foot. Because all the superintendent time will be front-loaded into the base bid, so you don't have any of that time associated in the alternates. Just gives a way to basically balance the budget, depending on what funding sources and how much ultimately is available.
So, has our Health Department been part of this process and agree with the proposal, et cetera?
We have been part of this process, and we do have some funding sources specific to the Health Department that are going to be covering some of the costs of the renovation, some COVID funding, and that's part of the reason it's being broken apart, because we actually have about three pots of money that can be used for certain things, and that I think will help us keep those items separate so that we can have the documentation to prove that we've spent the money, how it's been approved to be spent.
For example, one of them, I think, was alternate seven that came in. I think one of them was alternate seven for laboratory. That was a request that came specifically from the director because they have a pot of money dedicated just to laboratory improvements, so we can break that out, do what we need statute-wise for that, and so that's where some of these pots are getting broken out.
Okay.
Is, I think, is there time constraints on when these monies can be used?
There is. Thank you for bringing that up. Based on the timeline we have here, if everything goes as planned, we should be fine, but a lot of our funds that we receive have time deadlines that have to be met. I know we have one pot of money that will have availability through the end of May of 2024. Another pot of money we have available through the end of December 2024, and right now, there's a third pot that's good through the end of May 2023, but we're hoping there will be an extension. We just haven't heard that yet.
How much of that would it cover, Tara? I mean, is it?
So, the largest pot, I can't speak to all three pots because there's varying dollar amounts, but the largest pot that we have set aside, we want to use for COVID-related issues that were identified, and we asked the state to use a million of that, but again, those funds have to be used specifically for COVID-related issues. For example, storage, during COVID, we identified we didn't have enough storage space for all of the extra PPE supplies that we needed, so this renovation's going to give us some extra storage. Another example would be, when you enter the Health Department to receive services, when you come back for registration, our team members and clients are sitting kind of right on top of each other, and you know, during COVID, you need to stay apart. So, the goal that will be accomplished as part of the renovation is, when folks come into the reception area, they're going to walk up to a glass counter, where our staff is behind the counter, there's the barrier, and then the clients will talk to the staff member through that glass barrier. So, those are just a couple examples of COVID-related issues that were identified.
So, that's going to be like what we did in the clerk of court's office? Right, with the glass? Go ahead.
Those are just a couple of examples, but we asked permission to use this money, so it's, I can't give dollar amounts for the other two pots of money, but the million is the largest pot.
Only one is related specifically for opioid?
COVID.
I mean, COVID.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right. Any other questions?
I have a question, if you don't mind. Us guys that don't know all these things, when you're saying updated and renovated, and you said that several times, what exactly does that mean? And what are you doing to update and renovate an office?
So, I guess the...
I'm not against it, I'm just saying.
For renovations means a higher scale of work. We're moving a door, we're changing a wall or something like that. For updating it, especially in the exam rooms and some of the offices, it's new flooring, new ceiling tile, new lights, LED light fixtures, paint, you know, as a, growing up in this county, I remember going to the Health Department, and they still have the same orange 70s countertop that's been there for years. You know, those are, those are the upgrades that we're doing to the spaces.
Yeah, that's what I meant. I got a little mental picture here of what you're talking about. Thank you. Other questions, comments? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, I think that the ask of our Board of Paxton is to give you permission to seek bids on the project.
Yes, yes, if you would just authorize us to go ahead and put the project out for bid.
Is there a minimum of bids we have to have, or?
We have to have three, but I don't think that will be a problem.
All right. Any other comments or questions? All right, so the ask of the Board is to approve, authorize the county staff to advertise the project for bids.
Then I'll make the motion to authorize our county staff to advertise the project for bidding.
All right, dear Second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All right. Any other discussion? All right. Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those no, and it's all yours. Next is our Tourism Annual Report. Amber and David, who's coming? You coming, Amber? Okay.
Thank you for your time this evening. Chairman Frye, Vice Chairman Allen, Commissioners Haywood, Kidd, and McDowell. I come to you on behalf of the Randolph County Tourism Development Authority Board of Directors with a brief overview of some key highlights from our 2021 Annual Report. With me this evening, I have my Chairman, David Corin, and Board Member Ross Holt. I'll start with economic impact numbers, and I'll start nationwide, statewide, and then countywide. And the U.S. Travel Association reports that nationwide direct domestic and international travel spending was $1.1 trillion. In 2019, it was $2.6 trillion. You'll hear me referring back to 2019 as the pre-pandemic, as well as those are pretty, what, the numbers that we're looking at as we're moving forward. Among the 49 states and DC, direct travel jobs were down 25% compared to 2019, in which travel was among the top 10 industries in all states. In 2021, only 25 states reported travel in their top 10 employers. In North Carolina, travel generated $28.9 billion in visitor spending. This was a 44.9 increase, not 44.9% increase from 2020, and that was falling only 1% below the record expenditures in 2019 of $20.22 billion by domestic and international visitors. North Carolina hosted nearly 45 million visitors in 2021, and that was allowing direct tourism employment to the state increase of 10.5% to 197,500 employees. Each North Carolina household saved $580 on average in state and local taxes as a result of that visitor spending. In Randolph County, travel generated $107.06 million in visitor spending, and this is an increase of 65% from 2020. Revenues in 2021 totaled $8.2 million in state tax revenues and $5 million in local tax revenues. Randolph County was able to support 1,127 direct tourism jobs and more than $41.1 million in payroll income. The sales tax generated by travel throughout Randolph County attribute for a tax savings of $90.90 per county resident in 2021. Onto our occupancy tax or lodging taxes revenues. In 2021, occupancy tax revenues in Randolph County were reported at $1,155,778.55, and that was an 81.5% increase from 2020's collections of $636,761.81. And just as a reminder, these taxes are collected from our hotels, motels, bed and breakfast ends, Airbnb properties, and structures on campgrounds in Randolph County. The average occupancy of these properties was reported at 54.4% in 2021, and that was 25.2% higher than 2020's occupancy. Visitors paid an average daily rate on their room rentals at our properties of $84.60, and that was an increase of 12.4% from 2020. From this rate charged on each room, revenues were collected by Randolph County averaged to be $47.41, an increase of 45.4% from 2020. As far as what we look at for destination data in Randolph County, each year, our organization surveys our tourism attractions in Randolph County, and that's to evaluate their visitation records with visitor spending that has been reported. Of the 29 attractions we surveyed, they reported approximately 1,310,200, 310,281 visitors for the calendar year 2021, an increase of 158% from 2020. As those travel bans were lifted, restrictions decreased, and that pent-up demand was met by visitors to Randolph County. We had visitors from North Carolina, of course, Florida, Ohio, South Carolina, and Virginia were other top states. Within North Carolina, we welcomed visitors from our key metropolitan areas of Raleigh, Durham, Chapel Hill, Greensboro, Winston-Salem, High Point, Burlington, Charlotte, Gastonia, Concord, Wilmington, and Southport. We even had international requests come through our website to visit from Iran, India, Canada, Germany, and Poland. From the data collected, our organization can plan intentional advertising in the states and regions that we know are visiting our area to encourage those return visitors. For anyone unaware, we also operate the 7374 Visitor Centers in Seagrove through a partnership with North Carolina DOT. That allows us to further outreach our tourism message occurring with the operations in partnership. With DOT, we have 10 part-time employees that work six days a week at the visitor centers in Seagrove, northbound and southbound, and in 2021, they assisted 60,381 visitors collectively at both locations. This was an increase of 104% from the 29,535 visitors assisted in 2020. And I will recap, in 2020, we did close the visitor centers for six to eight weeks just to prepare us, but also because of stay-at-home travel orders. There was, no one was traveling, we didn't have a need to have those centers opened at that time. From these interactions, we were able to distribute key travel-related materials, a total of 51,850 pieces of our official Heart of North Carolina Travel Guide, the North Carolina State DOT North Carolina State DOT roadmaps, and the North Carolina Travel Guides. This distribution increased 30% from 2020. Visitation to our centers only reflected domestic travelers as that international travel ban was still in effect until November of 2021. As we think about our marketing, you will recall, we did decrease our budget in '20. We maintained that decreased budget in '21, so we were still working on a lean budget. So we really leaned on our social media and our website. Our organization's digital presence continued to grow with more utilization of our social media platforms. We grew connections with our partners and in turn built trust within our own followers by providing valuable and reliable visitor information. We saw a 1,494% increase in followers on Facebook and 996.3% increase of our followers on Instagram. These marketing tools were key as we balanced changing messages on safety protocols, small business hours of operations, and pertinent event details. A constant of our marketing and advertising is, of course, our website, heartofnorthcarolina.com. This is where we provide key information for our area attractions, restaurants, shops, accommodations, and events. Our website is maintained and updated daily by TDA staff to ensure quality information is available for the visitors in the planning process or a resident seeking a fun activity for the weekend. We did see a decrease in page views and unique visitors to our site, which may be a result of the instant response visitors and followers experience through our social media platform, along with up-to-date information provided right at their fingertips with those interactions. We also leaned heavily in these times on our public relations team. She assisted in social media marketing as well as we had decreased our staff. In 2021, we were fortunate enough to safely host nine in-person media tours. These media tours consisted of digital influencers, magazine editors, and freelance writers. From the media tours, we saw some notable results. Tar Heel Traveler, WRAL, out of Raleigh, covered the Pisgah Cover Bridge. NC Trippin' covered holiday tours at Lindbrook Hall in Trinity and broke records on TikTok with footage from her experience at Kersey Valley Christmas during the event's opening year. Triad Moms on Main featured the Piedmont Legacy Trails with inclusion of hiking trails in Randolph County. We had five total television segments in Charlotte, Raleigh, and Durham, six online story placements, one podcast featuring Millstone Creek Orchards, and Travel and Leisure, an online story featuring Seagrove and a list of best small towns in North Carolina. We also found success in compiling our own consumer-focused newsletter from the Heart of NC, including details of summer activities that feature 10 partners and fall activities featuring 13 partners and various events. Including in that social media, we also still maintain print advertising and digital advertising. 2021 allowed our creative team to step outside of the box with projects and investigate various publications we had not previously worked with. Shannon Media is a group of high-quality magazines in the Triangle area focusing on Chapel Hill, Chatham County, and Durham, all in those key drive markets. We formed a partnership with this media group for print and digital opportunities, and we also found a large presence in the newly-developed local publication of the Randolph Hub, filled with local news representing all the communities in Randolph County. The military market has always been valuable in our efforts, and we continued our relationship with the Graffon, a publication based in the Fayetteville market. With our commitment to the Courier Tribune and their ownership group, USA Today, we were able to place advertising in Wilmington, Asheville, and Fayetteville as well. We were also able to expand our partnership with Irish State Magazine into print advertising with digital newsletter components. New to 2021 was our bucket list bookmark project that has been a saving grace to our guest registries at the visitor centers and a collectible item for travelers as they frequent the centers through various seasons. Just some final thoughts that I have for you all tonight. These numbers are not a clear reflection of our marketing efforts, but rather the passion and the dedication of our tourism partners. The genuine hospitality of the residents in our communities is also a defining reason of our successes. Our organization continues to remain focused on sharing these messages of our family-friendly, affordable destination that is strategically located in the heart of North Carolina, Randolph County. Thank you for allowing me to share our successes. I told you all last year I was going to have some good numbers this year, and I'm happy to share those with you all tonight. Happy to take any questions.
Amber, on page three, the top visitor requests, are those ranked in order?
They are. Let me go to page three.
It's down at the bottom left. So we get more inquiries about the pottery than we do the zoo? Is that what that means?
That's through our website. So on our website, if you request travel information, you have the option to just request our travel guide, and then you can ask for additional information, Seagrove Pottery, Deep River State Trail Map, whatever we have a collateral piece for.
Hey, so let me ask you something. If, if, if that request comes in for Seagrove Pottery, is it just Seagrove pottery? Because we have other Randolph County potters that are not in Seagrove.
We also include our travel guide and the Seagrove Area Potters Association map. So that also includes those potters that are in Moore County and some that are in Montgomery County. We don't define by the county line. We define by address.
Okay. I'll take a closer look.
Okay.
And let me ask you this. I looked back at the occupancy, you know, information, and, you know, it just says the average daily rate increased 12.4%, but what, where are we with, with occupancy? I mean, we have the Zoo City Sportsplex about to open, I think in March, the last I heard, and some other things going on that would bring visitors to the area. And I'd just like to know, you know, what we look like. Do we need more in the way of, you know, hotels, VRBO, whatever's, Airbnb, whatever's out there? Are we in pretty good shape? What can you tell me?
I will say, I feel like we do need some more properties in the foreseeable future because I do see what's coming. I'm having meetings about folks wanting to bring these groups to the Zoo City Sportsplex. I'm having, you know, more and more conversations with our travel writers, encouraging folks to come visit the zoo. I'm having conversations with, you know, Kersey Valley Attractions that they're going to have more. Lindbrook Heritage State has a new business plan on the horizon. There's a lot going on in our county, and I feel like we do need some more properties to support that. We finished up 2022 3% above occupancy from '21, so we're just kind of leveled out. But I do feel like the properties have done really well on increasing that average daily rate because that does make our properties, they're still affordable, but it does make them competitive.
Okay. And let me ask you, do you have any, like, any feedback or any information on, as far as people staying in Randolph County somewhere, how far they will stay from where they are visiting? So if they're visiting in, in Seagrove, if they're visiting the zoo, will they, if they're at the Zoo City Sportsplex, will they use, you know, what they have in Archdale? Or are they more inclined to want to be close? Do you have any, any concrete data there?
I don't have anything concrete. We haven't done an intercept study quite yet. That is on the plans as we...
Intercept study. I'm going to write that one down.
Intercept study. So we will position ourselves at the visitor centers or at a hotel lobby and inquire of the visitors how far they would plan to go. But I feel like the markets that we're reaching out to in the Charlotte and Raleigh areas, they're accustomed to traveling.
Sure.
When they travel, they're okay going 15, 20 minutes down the road to an attraction or even a restaurant. So I don't think we're running into any challenges in that aspect.
Victory Junction's really not a tourist site. I mean, it's, it's obvious, like, being in the bottom there, because that's, that's for the kids that attend.
But their families come, and the families that have siblings that aren't affected by the illness, they, they need something to do too. So that's how we work with them.
And I guess sometimes those families may stay in the area for the week that their child is at camp. I mean, I've done that before.
To be close. Yeah, to be close.
You know, my son's to a camp in another state and then just stayed there and done things rather than have that drive on both ends of their stay. So
Exactly.
I had not thought about that.
Any other questions?
Well, it hasn't been recently. Have to be my grandchildren now.
Any other questions, comments? Okay. You've got some folks with you tonight.
Oh, I have my chairman, David Corin, and my TDA board member, Ross Holt. No one else is here, right?
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Okay, our voluntary ag district report. Ken Sharon.
A good evening. Glad to be back in amongst you. I've been sort of laid up with two back surgeries since November 15th and feel like I'm getting back to work. So glad to be here and talk to you a little bit about. First one, I want to cover the voluntary ag district report. Happy to report, we added 191 acres to that voluntary ag district this past year. And one, I like to highlight one event, major event when we, when I do these reports. And this time, I'm pleased to announce that we had a Randolph County land summit focused on the voluntary ag district, getting properties put into that, land conservation easements, even succession planning. If you do, if you have property and you do not have a succession plan, it's, it's something you ought to consider. Extension actually has resources on that. So if you just want some general information, we do have some resources on succession planning, how to pass your property down to your relatives or bequeath it to a foundation or whatever you need to do. So we were excited to have that land summit. That was held on November 4th of this past year, and we're looking to do that annually. I'd like to thank Blake Silve, who's here tonight. Blake was very instrumental in putting that land summit together, got the speakers together. Really appreciate the county participation. Hal Johnson was a speaker at that. Our tax department delivered some great information about present use value programs and that sort of thing. So we involved the, all aspects of the way land is used in Randolph County. So we appreciate that. Also bring to you, and you approved in your consent agenda, board members to be reappointed, Bobby Allen, who's here. Thanks, Bobby, for agreeing to serve again. Ken Austin, Bernard Beck. Wilbert Hancock has decided to retire from voluntary ag district. So we appreciate Wilber Hancock's many years of service on that board and, and wish him well. I know he'll still be involved down the road. All right. The other thing I want to do is a quick update on the Farm Food and Family Education Center.
Hold on before you do.
Okay.
So with the, with the land use summit?
Right.
Soil and water and
Yes.
Randy were instrumental in putting that together.
Right. They, they were involved, the easements and Jeannie before she left them. But before they, before the conservation aspects of putting your land in conservation easements, Randy Freeman in the office does a lot with that. So I appreciate Randy's involvement in, in doing that and helping educate because that's a little bit more involved process of getting those easements. It takes a good while to get all the deeds and all the information and attorneys involved and all that sort of stuff. So
I sensed that the people who were there were very interested
Oh, absolutely.
in the questions that they asked.
It was, it was very good.
It was very meaningful to them.
It was. Sure was. Thank you. Well, did you have that PowerPoint? Yeah. So want to provide a quick update about the Farm Food and Family Education Center. The architects have just completed the design development phase of the project, and thought it'd be a good time to bring a brief update to you about some progress and, and pictures worth more than a thousand words, so we'll have some pictures to look at too. So just a reminder, what this venue is about, is a dynamic, innovative, and collaborative place for people and organizations to build farm food and family systems that strengthens economies, enhances resiliency, and builds community. It's always good to remember why we are doing this in Randolph County. Funding, everybody wants to know about funding. So that's an important update. Also, the latest estimate in the design development phase actually came down a little bit from the schematic development phase. Several factors, the architects and engineers have been working very hard to find cost-cutting measures, changing the grading and the fill and all that is needed. So they did able to reduce the estimated cost down to $28.9 million. As you can see, the addition there, we have secured $28.3 million. So if you, if math is correct, we need additional funding to meet the current estimate of $600,000. So we're, we're working on that, and we are, actually had a meeting with the North Carolina Tobacco Trust Fund today, looking at submitting their proposal to them coming up. So here's where we are in the project schedule. We are in the owner review phase of the schedule here. The next part of the design develop, design process is for the architects to draw out the construction documents. That's scheduled to take two weeks, 12 weeks. The, what people really want to know is when we're going to see dirt moving, right? When, when, when we're going to see movement out there? And that's projected to start in October of this year. So we're moving along. It takes a lot of meetings and coordination on getting all the minutia of details completed in a plan like this. This is sort of a overview of the project. The two white areas, one's up in the, on the right-hand side, that's the main resource building where the offices will be located. The one on the left-hand side there is the event center and animal show ring and, and center there. So just to review a bit, a little bit about what's going to go, go on in these places. The resource center is where the corporate extension offices are, the soil and water offices, a commercial shared-use kitchen, demonstration teaching kitchen, digital skills lab, a food hub. All that's going to be in, in this space, along with teaching and educational spaces in this space. We have updated photographs or simulations of photographs to see. This is a more of a realistic picture, or does photograph, well, it's not a photograph, it's a, it's a rendering of what the architects would like project it's going to look like. So this is the family resource center. This is the building that's closest to 64 along the highway. This is the main lobby. As you enter into that raised glass portion that you see there in the center, this will be what you look at when you come in. Has an agricultural feel to it just by looking at the image there. This is my favorite photograph or favorite rendering. This is the 4H center and gardener lab where we have kids and people in there learning about agriculture and such. If you see in the background, there's going to be two garage-type doors that open up to the outside. There's a greenhouse there. There're going to be the, the community garden spots right outside the, the door there. Very easy flow of traffic and education and, and work happening in that space. The vet center is where it's going to be a, a, a air-conditioned inside space where events, graduations, things like that can happen, vendor shows, whatever that we, whatever that's booked in there. And then outside is an open, covered arena with a dirt floor and where livestock events and other, other types of events can be held. That's what, that will be like. A rendering of that space looks like this. The architects are really concerned if they had the right type of cows in the picture. So if you have opinions about that, I'll give you their number.
The Oreo cows are my favorite.
So the Oreo cows, yeah. No Oreo cows in the picture. No Oreo cows in the picture. So this is what the covered space is going to look like. They didn't provide an image of the, sort of the far back wide image of that, but this is what the. Luckily, we sort of have an idea what it might look like. This is a photograph of the Union County Center that this one was sort of modeled after. It won't be exactly like this, but this is actual, a real photograph from the Union County Center. So I had a couple of those. It's going to be a large, open span out in the, with, with dirt floor there. A greenhouse that sits outside. This is just an image I pulled off the internet, so it's not exactly what will be there, but it's an idea about what's going to be there as a facility that we can use for teaching and education and propagating plants. I talked about the funding, continuing fundraising. We're to the point now where we have enough in the plan to pull out individual items that we can go to our funding organizations and say, we need X amount of dollars for X piece of equipment. So these are just some examples that we'll be using when we ask for funding in the North Carolina Tobacco Trust Fund grants. They, we talked to them, they, they said they wanted something itemized that they could put their name on. Tobacco Trust Fund provided the funds for this teaching greenhouse as an example. So we're looking at structuring our ask in that, in that funding proposal to tailor it to the equipment that we know that we're going to need in the facility. So that's about it. So we, we've been working on, on that. Other, other questions?
Questions?
I, I don't have any questions, but I, I've kind of been involved in a lot of the. There's a lot of decisions that have been made and still a few more to be made as far as the interior designs, the exteriors, what the material's going to look like. And Kenny and his staff have done a good job working with architects and the, and the community at large to be able to pull that together in a cohesive manner. So I appreciate the, the work that they're doing. And you know, the fundraising part, we're still working with, but there's some, some opportunities for grants, but also private donations, sponsorships, those kinds of things that will be looking to, to help raise some funds too. So.
Yes, appreciate it. Commissioner Allen, we, we're working on a process of being able to, to purchase commemorative bricks to put as part of the entryway into the center. So we're working on that process. Hadn't got all that settled out and figured out yet, but that's going to be something. So if you saw something on that list or want to, want to provide some memorial to someone, we'd be glad to talk to you about that for sure. Also, very key in this project is Paxton. Paxton, thank you. He's at every meeting that we have about this project. And that man works his tail off to, to make these projects in Randolph County happen. I really appreciate Paxton's help in understanding of the drawings and all the things. And RJ was on the call today with an IT, with IT, talking about what type of IT systems we're going to need and the, where the, where the wires are going to need to run, all that, all that minutia of detail. And we appreciate the support the county has given in doing that, so.
Paxton's probably the busiest man in the county.
I tell you what.
And he's about to get busy.
Yes, so. All right, other questions?
Chairman, I, from my standpoint, I love the way you've broken it down. So everybody that can look at this and see where things are coming from, not just one big lump.
Right.
They can see where it's coming from and I can also see how you can, like you say, you're fundraising and, and those things can be done incrementally.
Right.
And I, I like the way you've, you've gone about doing this. I don't know where Paxton's been involved in all those things or not, but you've done a good job here. I really like the way you've gone about doing this.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Has the school done, I, I see their logo. Have they, they've done much of this?
The school?
State. NC State.
Oh, the state, yeah. It's going to be the home of the cooperative extension service, so we include that logo on our presentations and such, so.
I think Kenny too, to make it as wide-reaching as we can as far as the event center will be and can be used as emergency shelter and, and using those types of things too. I think air, the air systems.
Right.
Air efficient, working with Duke Energy. So there's been a lot of people that have not been named that are also involved.
Oh, absolutely.
A lot of the planning, so again, all throughout the county. Try to make it as useful to everyone as we can.
Right.
To get the better bang for the buck.
Yeah. There's going to, people are going to be able to use this facility in ways that, that there's not a facility like that now in Randolph County. And it's really going to help the community in ways we haven't even dreamed of, but there's going to be uses found for this facility, like the emergency shelter or, or a, a big events that you need for people to have a place to gather. It's, it's going to be a great facility for the county. Appreciate the county's support also, shouldn't neglect saying that. There was a five million dollar line item on that budget, so appreciate that.
Alan McNeil, his contribution.
Absolutely. I was going to tell him that I'm glad he waited to have a mic drop moment by getting this funding for the center there. So he, he did that and he's retired now, so we appreciate Mr. McNeil and his effort to help get that funding there.
All right, other comments, questions? Thank you, Kenny.
All right, thank you.
You said you guys joined us tonight also. All right, Chell, child fatality report, Tara and Tracy.
Good evening, Chairman Fry, commissioners. In accordance with North Carolina General Statute one forty-three dash five seven six, I'm here this evening to share the Child Fatality Prevention Team annual report for calendar year 2021, the child fatalities for Randolph County. As you know, every North Carolina county has a child fatality prevention team that is comprised of representatives of public and non-public agencies in the community that provide services to children and their families and other individuals who represent the community. And for a list of those committee members, you can look at the back page of the report to see who all's involved. The team meets to review child deaths that occurred during the previous year for children ages zero to seventeen to identify potential gaps or systems, system problems that contributed in any way to the delay or lack of services that might have prevented the death. If the team identifies any gaps, efforts are made to improve and/or add services that will prevent problems for families in the future. Our child fatality prevention team met virtually four times in 2022, once each quarter. There were eighteen child deaths reviewed for calendar year 2021. The causes of death were, there was one death related to accidents. And accidents could include anything from motor vehicle accidents, an unspecified threat to breathing such as asphyxiation, suffocation, aspiration of food, near drowning, drowning or choking. There were three child deaths related to birth defects, and that's usually associated with something that's congenital, that was existing at or prior to birth. We had three deaths related to illnesses, and illnesses could encompass things such as viral infections, cancer and things to that, to that effect. There were two deaths associated with perinatal conditions. That could be a clinical problem during pregnancy such as extreme prematurity or born with a cardiac defect or something like that. Four were categorized as other, and other means ill-defined and unspecified causes. That could include unsafe sleep. We did have two suicides in children age zero to seventeen in 2021. And in 2021, we had two homicides in children age zero to seventeen. And then the last, but of course not least, there was one child that died of SIDS, also known as sudden infant death syndrome. So that, that's our total of eighteen deaths. In our review of all the child deaths, no gaps were identified for the deaths that occurred in 2021. If we look back or think back to 2020, we were starting to see an increase in suicides. So the child fatality team requested and we received training related to suicide prevention for children and teams. And Daymark, our partner, they, they provided that training for our team. Lastly, while there were no deaths specified, specifically attributed to unsafe sleep, there were some observations made and noted in some of the documentation that the team reviewed from the local medical examiner or for the, from the office of the chief medical examiner that indicated there might be, might have been some unsafe sleep practices that happened in some of the homes. So our team, we haven't stopped. We continue to work with Randolph Health, the Partnership for Children to make sure that we're still getting the word out there about unsafe sleep and how to best protect children when they're sleeping. That concludes my portion of the presentation and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Questions?
Pretty sobering.
It's very sobering. And I will note, I mean, no, one child death is too many. But 2021, we had eighteen deaths and 2020, we had twenty-three. So we had five fewer, even though that's still too many, but just, just wanted to show that.
Twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two was fewer.
So we, right, right, we reviewed the, the previous year, like right now, we're reviewing 2022. So in 2021, there were eighteen deaths. In 2020, there were twenty-three deaths.
And just for the benefit of people that might be listening at home, what are some of the unsafe sleep habits?
It could be in a bassinet or a crib bedding. You know, folks like to put all that bedding in a, in a crib for decorative purposes. A baby should be sleeping in a crib with, with no extra bedding or the little bumper guards. It could be a child in a bed with a parent. You know, the child could fall off the bed and get wedged between the mattress and the wall. Those are just a couple of examples. Or a boppy. Folks like to put those babies on a boppy, if you know what I'm talking about, those little round boppies. You know, an infant can't hold itself up, so if it slides down, it can get itself in a, in a situation where it would be an unsafe sleep, sleep death.
Other questions, comments? Okay. Tracy?
Good evening, everyone. That was a very sobering report that Ms. Akers gave. Mine has a little bit more hope. I'm reviewing the Community Child Protection Team report. And I love the name of this team because it's the community. The entire community works together so that we can more as a unit protect children and our community. There hasn't been a lot of change over the years for this report. We still have the same top areas of concern. And it will be no surprise to you that one of those top areas is substance abuse. The devastation that our community has endured from substance abuse has been very well documented. And of course, that is touching our families and our children in a way that is very severe. So that is one of our top areas of concern. And the other top area of concern, if you see the number, is injurious environment, which is a little bit more difficult to explain. But injurious environment is any environment that presents a substantial risk of harm to the child or actual harm to the child. An example of that could be a child who, whose parents have perhaps overdosed and the drug paraphernalia and the illegal substances are out where the child can reach them. Another example of injurious environment could be perhaps a youth who himself has overdosed and passed away and those siblings in the home where that youth had access to those substances are in an injurious environment. So those were the top two reasons, substance abuse and injurious environment for us. Again, not a lot of change from previous years. I want to move in and talk to gaps and recommendations made by the team. As Ms. Akers talked about, one of our recommendations was around co-sleeping also. Mothers who are feeding their children and fall asleep with the children in the bed, rolling over on them. Those are all very unsafe sleeping situations. And what we have found for the state of North Carolina is unsafe situations combined with both either or. Alcohol and substance abuse is a higher level of risk for young children. So that's one of the things that both teams are working on collaboratively, collaboratively, is unsafe sleep. Secondary is mental health. Mental health in our community is still a real challenge for us. I don't know how many of you have been watching the news, but there have been some very recent reports on departments of social services having children who are sleeping in their offices. That has been happening in our communities and counties close to us. I saw two different counties and the report was just over the last day or so. We have been helped in Randolph County with our, our behavioral health urgent care here. We don't have children sleeping at Department of Social Services, but our challenges still remain in placing children, especially children who have high acuity needs. And what I mean by that is Department of Social Services can work with families for traditional foster care. Those are children we bring into foster care who have no behavioral health or substance abuse issues. And those are homes that we can license as being a foster family. But children with high acuity needs who may have substance abuse issues or behavioral health issues, Department of Social Services can't license them. And they are more difficult to find. They are more difficult to find in our county and sometimes difficult to find in our state. For instance, right now, we have a very young man who is adorable, six-year-old who has been in Brenner's since around June of 2022, whom we have been working with our LME, MCO and state partners in finding a safe placement for this young man. And we have beat bushes and begged and pleaded and called, finally found a possible placement out of state. Now the policy has changed so that if we place any youth out of state, that has to be something that is approved in court. So we continue to have those issues with behavioral health and mental health placement of our youth, especially inside our county with those high acuity needs. That is an ongoing issue, not new for this year, but ongoing. Some of our recommendations in order to help that is to continue to reach out to our collaborative partners, law enforcement, schools, behavioral health centers, hospitals, all of our partners, and continue to provide presentations to them so that we can inform them and they can in turn assist us with informing the public and bringing prevention issues to the forefront of their mind in recognizing what child abuse looks like, what child neglect looks like, what's an injurious environment. So that's a big recommendation that we continue to do is reaching out into our community for public awareness. That is the most important one that we do is the public awareness piece. And that's something that we work hard on every day with our community partners. And we certainly couldn't do this. It's, like I said, it's the Community Child Protection Team. So we could not do this work without those community partners that are arm-in-arm with us. I'm happy to take any questions that you have about the Community Child Protection Team or recommendations.
With the team, with the prevention and child protection team, is there a set number? Like, could you add somebody?
Are you asking if we can add members to the?
I'm thinking, I mean, I don't have the communities, how that's put together, but I see that the city schools are represented. but I see that the city schools are represented and the county schools are represented. And it seems to me like if the goal is to reach that large number of children and public awareness, the charter school is, I've been told when it's finished, I mean, I think, I mean, Sharon, Dr. Castelli, he's already left. But I've been told that that's going to be, I think, maybe the largest charter school in the state when everything's finished. There's a lot of children down there.
So I can tell you that our goal is not to exclude anyone from that. And we need everybody to come to the table. And when you're looking at our members, members on my team and Tara's team is the same. So absolutely, we want to get the word out to everyone.
It's maybe just an oversight because if you, you know, if you do get those public schools, then, you know, that's really a third system.
Sure. Agreed. I think that's something that we can work on.
Tracy, I know there's a big situation up in Guilford with the three kids that was in the house with fire. And the four-year-old they found, I think it was heroin in his, in his system. Is that just from leaving it laying around and not, or they actually give it to him? And that, I'm just using that as an example. I know you, I don't know how much you know about that specific, but.
So I don't know how that child ingested those drugs.
Do we have?
But we have children here in Randolph County who have.
Something similar in our county.
Who have ingested illegal substances. Some have died and some have not. We have that same situation happening in our own community. Like I said, the ravages of the substance problem has been well documented here, and that does not exclude families and children. We usually hear about it less. Yeah, but it's happened here, too.
Could you, could you address a little bit about whether the children you're seeing now are more, could possibly be more violent now in their acting out?
So I don't know if I would characterize them as more violent. They are more traumatized. And that trauma exhibit itself in behaviors that are difficult to control. So when I talk about children with high acuity needs, those are, those youth that I'm talking about that has certainly been more traumatized by their environment, by their parents' substance use, by behavioral health issues. All of those things are significant. And I think you could ask any school teacher anywhere, or the superintendent here. You know, you could ask any superintendent, both of our superintendents or any school teacher, the children are different. They are challenged. They are more traumatized. And it calls on us to be, and be arm-in-arm with all of us in order to provide the best service to them as possible. But I wouldn't say violent, I would say more traumatized. And that trauma exhibit itself in behavior that is difficult to manage.
And I would suppose that you've got a problem with, with getting the, the adults that can work with these children.
That would be a very, very true statement. And speaking of adults, sometimes the parents of these children are very traumatized themselves. And that behavior exhibited itself in their parenting and their ability to cope, which further traumatizes their children.
A lot of this started with the previous generation.
Did. It's true.
Let me ask one more question. Do you find that you're seeing now children that are possibly, that could be, I don't know the right word to say here, could be a problem with, with the nursing or doctoral facilities and people?
So I want to go back to the example of the six-year-old that's been in the hospital since June of 2022.
He's a six-year-old, right? Okay.
We initially had him at Department of Social Services while we were trying to find treatment. There was kicking, hitting, spitting, hair pulling. That behavior has continued in the hospital. And that's a difficult situation for us to manage and for the hospital to manage. So that is, those are the youth that have been very, very traumatized. And I have to be honest, lots of times, it's because of some unmet need that we, their parents and we haven't yet figured out. You know, is the child able to hear us? Is the child able to see us? Does the child have autistic tendencies? Are they developmentally delayed? You know, we don't know. Those are things that it takes us some time and testing in order to figure those things out.
So Tracy, to understand, the child you're referring to, six-years-old, back to middle last year, you're still responsible for that child?
He is our child. We are responsible for making decisions for him and making sure that he's safe. I certainly want to give the hospital so much appreciation. They have done a lot in order to try and attend to this child. But, you know, I can understand it. They're getting tired and he is challenging. So, yeah.
Are you finding it hard to find hospitals that'll even take this patient?
Yes.
They can use the overcrowding as an excuse now, can't they? Or do they have, do they have a mandate to take that child here regardless?
So I have to say, there's challenges for the hospital as well because this is not an issue, as I was saying earlier, with the media attention on departments of social services that have children living in their offices. It's happening all across North Carolina. And everybody, in an effort to commit that child for behavioral health treatment, first takes them to the hospital. So the hospital, they are, they are doing a large lift for our state right now. They need support also. That's not an appropriate placement for the child. We have to continue to work really, really hard in encouraging placement facilities that are capable of caring for this child to accept them. And there are facilities, he's leveled up to a level other than traditional foster care, but there are facilities that could take care of him, that he is the correct level for, that refuse to care for him because his needs are too great. So what happens?
From my little experience on the Sandhills Board, there's a lot, it's hard enough to find adult places, hospitals, centers, facilities for adults, much less children.
Absolutely.
And so that makes it even that much, that much tougher because of the, there's a lot of different regulations that you, you've got to deal with a child versus an adult. And it's just, it's just tough. They're just not out there. Sandhills does have a couple of child facility-based crisis centers in Richmond County and one up in Greensboro. So they are out there, but they're, you know, it's just that much harder to work with a child than it is with an adult. And there's not, services for adults are hard to find, especially in rural counties, too. So it's a challenge.
It is a challenge. The extra challenge with children is usually a child that's with DJJ that doesn't have a placement and could be violent. Or a child in our community, if they're in the hospital and nobody can find placement, we're the last line of defense. So we get that child. That child becomes a county, our responsibility, whether there are placements for that child to be found or not.
All right.
Thank you for attention this evening.
Thank you, Tracy. Any other questions? All right. Communications, Chelsea.
I have a PowerPoint there, Will. Good evening, everybody. And thank you for having me. I appreciate your time and thank you for allowing me to come before you on today and talk with you a little bit about our communication function and what that looks like. As many of you know, I have been with the county now for about a year and a half. And so last year, in September of '22, which would have been about my one-year anniversary, Hal said to me, he said, "You've been here for a while. How long have you been here?" And I said, "Well, it's been about a year." And he said, "We need to get you on the agenda." And so every month since then, he's told me that I'm going to be on the agenda and we keep having to push it back. And so I'm super excited to finally be here before you tonight. Let's see here. Okay. So what I want to do is just walk you guys through just a little bit, a little bit of developmental things that we've done with the communication function. I'm going to talk about a couple of things that we've accomplished, and then we're going to touch on what we're looking at in the future. So the first thing that I'd like to talk about is the mission of our communications function and kind of the core values. And I developed these in conjunction with Hal and just kind of talking about what we needed out of this role. And what we, what we came up with was simply to provide timely, relevant county government information to the citizens of Randolph County. And that's guided by the core values of transparency, clarity, interactivity, timeliness, and reliability. So simply put, we want to provide accurate information to our citizens and we want to be a trusted resource of information from our citizens. We want our citizens to know that the things that we're putting out are accurate, they can trust those things, we're putting them out in a timely manner and that they're reliable. Again, the purpose of this function can really be divided up into about six buckets. I'm not going to read all of that to you, but I am going to kind of touch on the highlights. So there's, and there's really about five major things that I do most of the time. One of those is the management of our digital assets. So if you think about like our social media and our website, any of the information that's kind of going out through those, I'm helping facilitate that and put that together. And we'll touch a little bit more on social media in just a minute. Also work with the production of publications and marketing materials. So anytime some of our departments have events or things that they're trying to get out to the public, lots of times I'm working with them to develop strategy on that. Sometimes they need graphics developed and those sorts of things. And so I can kind of help support them through those things if they don't have a person that's dedicated to that function. Obviously, we have departments of different sizes. And so some people have a person on staff that can do that and some departments don't. And so I work collaboratively, collaboratively with those departments as they need that support. The next part of my function is media management. I do provide a central point of access for the media. So not that I'm always speaking to the media, but that I'm a central contact for them. And so if they need to be directed to one of you or a department head or our county manager, I'm able to do that. I'm also able to facilitate press conferences if we need those, get press releases out, help with statements and that sort of thing. Providing educational opportunities. We do have a crisis communications training event coming up soon. That kind of fits into that bucket. And I'm going to touch on that just a little bit more in my next slide. And finally, helping increase the visibility and presence of the county. And that, that works with our community relations function. So making sure that we're in good communication with our community stakeholders, our partners, et cetera, is something that falls in my lap sometimes, too. I want to touch on just our major communications methods with our audiences. Most of the time, it's going to be our citizens, people who are following us on social media, people who are engaged and interested in what we're doing as a county and what that looks like. One of the things that I've developed since I've been here that I feel has been really successful, I think Hal feels it's been really successful, is the Randolph recap. And what that is, is a recap of these meetings. So what I do is I take the information that we get from these meetings, the motions, the things that come up, and I kind of condense that and just make those short, short summaries of what happened. And then I publish that to the website and social media. We have found that citizens use it quite often. The media references it. Lots of times I have to reference it if we get questions about what's going on. And it's just a nice way to have something out there that people can engage with and get an understanding of what's going on at these meetings. So there's always one published within at least a week of these meetings. And if we have special meetings that are public, I'll do one for those, too. Probably our most important communication method would be between our website and social media. Our website is kind of like our hub. So we'd like to make sure that we're directing people to use the website. You have news on the website. People can get to different departments and see their information. People can access jobs. People can access critical messaging. All that is right there on our website. And so our website is a very important piece of how we communicate with the public. Press releases kind of speak for themselves. That's any communication that we're doing with the media to get our information out there. Social media, I will go into next, is also a very important piece of what we do. It's probably the most direct and quick way to communicate with people. And it's the only way, one of the only ways, we can manage exactly what we say. We cannot manage how people respond. We can manage what we say. Our biggest following is on Facebook. We have got about 4,700 followers on Facebook, which is a good number for a government organization, and that continues to grow. When I started in September of 2021, we were at about 5,500 followers. So there's been a consistent uptick in those, and so that's a good thing. We do also have Twitter, Instagram, YouTube, and LinkedIn, and we have followings on each. And so the big thing with that is just making sure that we make information accessible. Typically, people use different platforms or prefer different platforms. So we share our information across all of those so that people have the same amount of access to that information. And in total, we have about 7,000 followers across all of those platforms. So that's a pretty big reach when we need to get our information out. That's really important when it comes to sharing critical information. If there's ever a crisis or anything like that, we've got a pretty good reach on who we can, who we can get to through social media in a timely manner. The next thing we want to move into is what our future initiatives are. And so I touched on a few minutes ago, our upcoming crisis communications training event. That will be in about a month here, March 7th. We're going to hold that in the EOC, at Emergency Services. It's, I'm really, really, really excited about that event. We will have representation, of course, from this board. We'll have representation from our department heads. We will have representation from our school systems. We'll have representation from almost every one of our fire departments, our police departments and county, and city and county management. So we're really, really excited about that. We are going to have dynamic speakers there. And what that will do is give us an opportunity to have community stakeholders and partners in the room and develop a crisis communications plan for Randolph County that's specific to Randolph County. What will come out of that event a couple of months later is the development of a published crisis communication plan. And I will be back before you to present that following that event. And I think I do have one more thing. The last thing I do want to point out that continues to be an initiative is collaboration with departments. My job is not successful if I don't have that collaboration with our departments. And to this point, it has been, it has been great. Our departments have been a wonder to work with and it makes my job so much easier. And the one department that I do want to give a shout out to that does so much for me all the time is IT. They always make me look good. I always have a request that is not always easy to fill. It needs to be done almost immediately every time, and they always come through. And so I just want to say special shout out to them. Lots of the things that you guys see, the videos, the live streams, all of those things, that comes from our IT department. They do an excellent job and they are a big part of my function and what I'm able to accomplish. And I believe that is all I have. So if anybody has questions, I am happy to take those.
I just want to say that Chelsea joined the county in late 2020?
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one. About just a few weeks before the December 6th announcement of the megasite. And she jumped right in from day one, like she'd been here for the whole 10 years following this thing. And I got lots of compliments from some of those folks that was over here tonight and their staffs and Toyota itself on the professionalism and the response that you, that you provided. And you can't scare, you can't intimidate her, I tell you that. And it's been good. And I was going to, I was going to say something about this that are, that the manager updates, but the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners is going to video our Crisis Operations Center here. They're doing a documentary of sorts on what county government does. And we hosted a. And we hosted a couple of state committee meetings in that operations center. And our staff at the association just fell in love with it. And they're going, on emergency services, they're going to use our EMS and operations center as a here's how you do it thing. And I covered that with Chelsea the other day. And I know the folks over at EMS have had some contact with the association, but that'll be on a video with others from health or social services, whatever. But on emergency services, that'll be ours. And back during the hurricanes, three or four years ago, we dispatched Beaufort County from our EMS center, our 911 call center right here in Ashboro, all the way to Beaufort County on the coast of North Carolina. And Ed Booth and some of them really, he tells that everywhere he goes. But we were able to do that from our operations center. So that's going to be on our video for the state association to take around and show.
And we'll get a copy of that video as well and be able to share that through our outlets and that sort of thing so that, so that our citizens have access to be able to see that, too.
Mr. Chairman, I wanted to emphasize what Chelsea does. The Randolph recap, the complexity of county government in the past 10 years has just gone out of sight. And the average citizen is hard to understand all the issues that come before a board of county commissioners. And what Chelsea is doing at all our meetings is doing a summary of highly complex issues that this board is having to deal with every month and putting that out there so that our public can understand that, those issues, enough so they can ask additional questions if they want to. And that's what communications is all about. So I just want to highlight that Randolph recap. Good job.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Chelsea. Any other comments, questions? Thank you very much. Okay. Amy, are you going to make some comments on our next go-round of public hearings on the?
Yes.
Fire departments?
As you know, until recently, fire departments in Randolph County were capped and their tax rate was capped at a 15 cent rate. And that's because of how they were formed and when they were formed. Based upon needs expressed by several fire departments and the expectation that more would need that in the future, you began converting the, well, abolishing the current cap districts and recreating them without the cap. This is actually the last round of fire departments. So once, once these are done, all of the fire departments in the county will be at the uncapped rate.
We've been doing them in fours and this will be in six.
This one's a six, yes. Basically, you know, as you know, the process, in order to remove that cap, we have to abolish the current district and then recreate it without the cap. Abolishing is really simple. You set a public hearing and after the public hearing, you can pass a resolution abolishing the district. Creating the new uncapped district is slightly more complicated. It does require a public hearing, but it requires certain notice requirements. Notice is mailed to all property owners in the district and then the public hearing, of course, is advertised as well. Tonight, we are asking you to begin the process for Colridge, E-Rack, Fair Grove, Farmer, Julian, Northeast, and Staley. And first, tonight, you will need to consider the following for each of these districts. The resident or seasonal population and population density of the district, the appraised value of property subject to taxation in the proposed district, the present tax rates of the county and any cities or special districts in which the district or any portion thereof is located, the ability of the proposed district to sustain any additional taxes necessary to provide the services, and then any other matters that you deem to be relevant. Fire Marshal Eric Beard has provided a fact sheet for each district that contains the items that are required to be considered. As I said before, you can consider any other matters that you deem relevant. And once you've considered those issues, you may pass the attached resolutions if you find that the following applies for each district, that there is demonstrable need for providing fire protection services. For each district, we did provide the number of calls received during the past year to demonstrate that need, that it is impossible or impracticable to provide the services on a county-wide basis, that it is economically feasible to provide the proposed service in the district without unreasonable or burdensome tax levies, and that there's a demonstrable demand for the services by persons residing in the district. The resolutions that are in your packet make certain the findings, call for the creation of a report that is available for public inspection, and set public hearings on the abolition of the current district and the creation of the new districts for your meeting on April 3rd. The notice of the public hearing would be published at least one week before the hearing and is mailed to all property owners in the district at least four weeks before the hearing. And the resolution directs me to oversee those mailings. So if after you consider these items, you pass the attached resolutions and set the public hearings, I'll get the reports to the clerk to be available for public inspection in accordance with state law.
All right. They don't specifically speak to April the 3rd. Do we need to include that or that's?
The resolution?
I'm talking about our motions, I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry. I don't think you would have to state that in the resolution, in the motion, since the resolution, you're passing the resolutions.
Can we read the motion for the first one and then just call for a vote on the?
On the resolution for the next one?
We have to do them individually, but we don't have to read the motion every?
I don't think you would have to read the entire motion, no, sir.
All right. Any other questions, Amy? We've gone through this several times now.
Last one.
All right, so David, you want to read that first motion for Colridge E-Rack? And then we'll do, yeah, we'll do them by your areas. I have, I have Fair Grove. That's the only one I have. All right. Max, can you read the motion for Colridge E-Rack? And then we're going to take, take the others in order.
In formal.
In formal, yep.
The motion is to adopt a resolution making the required findings, setting a public hearing on the matter, and directing the Associate County Attorney to oversee the publication and mailing of required notices and preparation of required reports for the Colridge E-Rack Fire Department, Fire District as presented.
All right. Do I have a motion, do I have a second to the motion? I hear a second, have a second to the motion. Any other discussion or questions? Those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Those no, and it's approved. I make a motion that we set the public hearing for Fair Grove Fire District. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Those no. And the next one, Max, is yours.
It's mine. I make the motion for the Farmer Fire District.
All right, have a second.
Second.
Motion and second for discussion. Those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Those no. And David, I think the next three probably are yours.
I'll make a motion for the, same thing for the Julian Fire District.
Have a second.
Second.
Motion and second. Those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Those no. Next one is, all right?
I'll make a motion that we adopt the same resolution for Northeast Fire District.
I'll second it.
Have a second for the discussion. Those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Those no. And last one.
And last but not least, I'll make a motion we adopt the resolution for Staley Fire District.
I'll second.
Have a second, have a motion and second. Those in favor, ladies and gentlemen, saying aye.
Aye.
Those no, and they are so ordered. So Amy, you will take care of all the notices and it'll be for our April board meeting.
Yes, sir, thank you.
All right, thank you. Our last item of business is adopting our budget schedule for 2324 budget process. Anybody have an issue that you know of right now with this schedule? Do I have a motion to adopt?
I make the motion to adopt, to approve the proposed budget meeting schedule for fiscal year 2324.
Have a second?
Second.
Second. Well, Morgan, you see any dates on there that, I know it's a ways off, but be here before you know it. All right. Those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Those no. And it is approved. All right.
February is an incredibly busy month for the Board of Commissioners. We count tonight, there are four public meetings scheduled in February. We have a, we meet with the city schools, it's coming Thursday. City of Ashboro Schools, tour of Ashboro High School at 4:30 with a meeting with their board afterwards. We also have a zoning appeal that will be coming before the Board of Commissioners later in February. I believe that's February the 20th. And then on February the 23rd, we have our annual planning retreat. Everybody always says, "Oh, your planning retreat, where are you, where are you going?" And I say, "Well, we're retreating down to the big room on the first floor of the county office building." So that's where we're having our retreat again this year. And there's multiple major issues to be discussed during that planning retreat. I will update the board extremely briefly on the growth, the management plan, steering committee that has been established. We had our first meeting last month. We'll have another meeting later in February at the Emergency Operations Center. And as you know, that's looking at the Northeast Randolph County in relation to the mega site and growth issues that are going to be occurring out there in that area.
I got it. Dick, you don't know the date right off?
No.
All right. I know Dana, I think she sent out like for the next five or six of those meetings, I believe. Yeah. Right, yeah. All right. Is that all you have?
Yes.
David and I attended our North County Association of County Commissioners Board Meeting a week before, weekend before last. The only thing I would report there, I was going to talk about the movie. They told me about that. But there's another round of opioid funding coming. Looks like right now, North Carolina will get about $600 million. Our first round was $750 million, so this is about 80% of that. Our cut out the first money was right at $9 million. I don't, but Will is working with association and the lawyers on the memorandum of understanding. There's about six of those. And so there will be some more opioid money coming to be used for that purpose. And just like we've done the other, that'll go back to our committee that's driving that process for us. And I did talk about the movie. And also, I sent John Ogborne a text last Wednesday at our COG Executive Board Meeting. The town of Bermuda Run, I've been going to COG for 40 years. This is the largest single grant that I remember going directly to a municipality. Bermuda Run got a three and a half million dollar grant for road improvements and pedestrian safety for their sports park. I sent John Ogborne a copy of that while I was there in the meeting, but I know they've got the Sports Flex going outside town here and I don't know what kind of money they're spending on it, but there's, there's all kinds of grants out there about anything you want to do. But Bermuda Run got three and a half million dollars to improve pedestrian and traffic for their sports park. That's my report, David. I just said that one thing for my.
The only thing I'd add on the opioid thing, it's, I think the first round was over 18 years and this will be over 13 years. So it's a little bit different, I believe, if I heard correctly. And it's not all equal. I think each one of the defendants got a different payment schedule. I think Walmart was going to pay all theirs upfront in one year. So it may be a little bit front-end loaded, but there's a significant amount of money that's coming for the next 13 years, over and above the 18 years that we're already looking at.
I think Walmart.
Walmart, CBS, and?
CBS, no.
I don't remember who.
Walgreens?
I believe it may have been Walmart.
Walmart, Walgreens, and CBS, yeah. All right.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Before we, before we dismiss, it has come to my attention this last few days, actually, that there is a movement afoot. I think the Sheriff's Department's involved in it. I know I've got this information through Keaton's Place. It involves a program dealing with the homeless. And a program that there, that is somehow being disseminated. I think it'd be, I think it behooves us. I really can't say that I know functionally about it that much, but, but I know that it's obviously a, a good program to help the homeless in Randolph County. Something to do with plastic bags and?
They were on Fox 8 one night last week.
I didn't see that, so.
It takes 400 plastic bags to make a mattress. That's what that was about.
I honestly don't know that much about it, but if, if you might, can you explain something about that? I know y'all are very involved with it.
Well, so.
Come on.
Mike, thank you. Always.
So our chaplain has been talking with Susan Hunt at Keaton's Place. They actually have emergency services that's also involved in it. They're collecting shopping bags, the plastic Walmart or from your grocery shopping. We're collecting those at various sites and there's a group of people getting together to weave those together to actually make mats for the homeless here in the county. So the bags that most people just kind of throw in the trash or don't recycle like they should, we've actually found a reason or a use for those that we can repurpose them and also help our homeless population. So we're collecting at the sheriff's office. The jail has a collection site. Emergency Services has a collection site. Does the courthouse, Jeremy? Yeah. So just about any of the sheriff's office offices actually have a collection site.
I think they do collect at Keaton's Place, too.
They do.
Yeah, Keaton's does, too.
They had Susan on TV.
Is that right? I didn't see that, so I don't know, but.
I think the Senior Adults Center, too.
I don't think.
They're not collecting.
Right. DSS.
Yeah, we have a couple of other ones as well.
For volunteers to actually make them, if you know anything about.
The word I heard was crochet.
Macrame.
Macrame, okay.
Oh, yeah. Which is amazing to me that you can do that and?
They showed one on TV that had been made.
I think.
If we could, if we could get away with using those at the jail, we could save some money on mats.
All right. Any other business to come from this board? I have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Have a second.
Second.
We are adjourned. Thank all of you. Appreciate your patience tonight, those watching at home. Philip, good to have you, buddy.